Okay, I'm gonna call the meeting to order. And I can't, a motion to go in the executive session.
Motion.
Any discussion? All in favor of going in the executive session, say so by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say so by saying nay.
I made a motion to come out of the executive session.
Alright. Any discussion? All in favor of coming out of the executive session, say so by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say so by saying nay. Alright, now we need to certify the executive session. So whereas the town council convened an executive session on this date pursuant to an affirmed recorded vote and in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Innovation Act and whereas 2.1-344.1 of the Code of Virginia requires a certification by this council that such an executive session was conducted in conformity with Virginia law, now therefore be it resolved that the town council hereby certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge, one, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law were discussed in the executive session to which this certification resolution applies, and two, only such business, public business matters as were identified in the motion convened the executive session were heard, discussed, or considered by the town council. So I need a roll call vote. So we'll start with us. So Vice Mayor Catherine is here. Councilmember Davis.
Aye.
Councilmember Box.
Aye.
Councilmember Beasley.
Aye.
Councilmember Hankins is absent, and Councilmember Klein.
Aye.
So we've certified the executive session. Were there any public or business discussed where we need a motion?
Uh, yeah. I'd like to make a motion to give $250,000 to the medical. Taz, this right here, Corrigan.
No, it's not Corrigan, it's right here.
Okay, fine. Hello? Okay, yeah, thank you very much. I'd like to make a motion to donate $250,000 to the Tazel Community Foundation discussion that we had.
Say it.
Alright, any discussion?
I mean, I think it's important to point out that this is going to enable the community foundation to keep scholarships for Tazel residents. That enables students to go to undergraduate, graduate school and come back and be medical providers in their area, and that's an important reason for our support for this donation request.
And I would also mention that these funds are also funds that are coming out of the funds we had reserved for the sports complex, and not only is this going to improve our overall health, it's almost like an extra utility that we can provide for the, we can help provide for the citizens of Tazel, and even hopefully bring in businesses with this.
I think this will be able to, you know, bring business in for this project, helps our senior citizens and our people in our town quicker to go to, easier to go to.
When you add up to six to eight new physicians, it keeps our citizens from having to travel to, with Bristol, things of that nature, just to see a family provider. So I think it's a great idea to try to help make sure this project.
If someone that has had to drive to Marion to see a pediatrician.
Absolutely.
It will be greatly beneficial.
So, all in favor of providing a donation of $250,000 to the Tazel Community Foundation, say so by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say so by saying nay. Alright, so we're gonna jump right into the seven o'clock 2024-2025 budget discussion. So on 14th May of May 2024, 7:00 p.m. in the Town Hall of Tazel, Virginia, the Town Council will hold a public hearing on the budget preparation and planning for the fiscal year 2024 through 2025, as well as the tax rate and fee schedules. The entire proposed budget may be inspected by the public from 8:00 a.m. to 4:30 p.m. Monday through Friday at the Town Manager's Office in Tazel, Virginia. So if anybody from public here should discuss the budget. One once. Two twice. Okay, so we're gonna close out this public hearing and jump into the joint public hearing. We don't have, do we have the write-up for the joint public hearing? I have an email from Leanne, or from Chris, Leanne?
We do.
With the public, the planning commission recommendation? Your little thing just beeped. Your little recorder?
God, are you serious?
I don't like the sound.
I got triple ones in the office, I mean. I got triple ones in the office, you see them?
Triple's got that earrings.
Is it recording?
You gotta wait. You don't need to hurt.
She's with her kids right now.
You wanna back up?
Yeah.
So this is the naming code? So this would come after the public hearing? So what's the announcement for the public hearing?
I think it's on the page.
Before?
About the Amazon.
Yes. Yeah, so I need sort of like what we introduced the budget meeting.
You watch your present, Mr. President.
Yes.
Yeah, that's what I get.
Got your lines?
Oh my God, they don't have to prove. Nice, yeah. So this is a public hearing. The Town Council Planning Commission for the Town of Tazel will hold a joint public hearing in the council chambers of the Tazel Municipal Building at 7:15 p.m. on Tuesday, May 14, 2024. The purpose of this hearing is to receive public input on rezoning the property at 106 Grant Road, Tazel, Virginia, 24651, and its current classification of B2, Business General, the M1, Industry General. Anyone with comments or concerns regarding this request are encouraged to attend the public hearing and speak on this matter, or submit written comments to be entered into the council record at such time. Additional information may be obtained by contacting Chris Hurley at 276-988-2501. So anyone from the public here, this is the line of C, correct?
Yes.
Well, it's a property adjacent to the line.
It's the house.
It's not the actual property that's.
Up near where they have the garden.
Yeah.
It is right, uh, adjacent to the county line.
Yeah.
Say county line, the county, town, division line.
Not the county.
Not the county.
Okay, so if no one from the public's here to speak on this matter, we'll close out this joint public hearing and recess until 7:30 for the regular town council meeting. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, thank you for attending the regular town council meeting. If you could stand for the pleasure of meeting, then we take it.
Let the legends, the flag of the United States of America, and the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Pastor Russell, could you lead us in that position?
Lord, we're so grateful for our town and this blessing that you provide to the seat. We ask the blessing on this meeting to see, in the name of Christ, we have the prayer.
Please be seated.
Well, don't choose, you might as well conversation. It's the first on the agenda, does the Main Street provided by the district fundraising concerts support request? Uh, Mr. Manny Ullrich?
Mr. Mayor, she requested that you push the button.
A more plausible time?
This has our flyer and our sponsorship back.
You know, it's all dark, right? It's not showing anything.
Might as well get you another pen.
You better be a fast writer.
Or I can be a slow toddler.
You can be a slow toddler.
That kid like 30 seconds.
Do a jig or something?
I've tried to make the last joke back to me.
Thank you. Okay.
Well, I'd like to start by saying thank you for allowing me to come and share with the town council, and really the town broadly through this platform about a very exciting event that we have coming to our town. Over the past several years, Main Street United Methodist Church has been engaged in missions in East Africa, in the country specifically called Kenya. Our work there has been profitable. The past two years, we've repaired a well for the Maasai tribe, bringing fresh water to an entire village. We coordinated and funded the building of a community chicken coop which provides food and economy for several families. We have supplied essential resources to a school of over 300 children, purchased the school its first printer, and paid to have electricity installed in classrooms at Vittori Primary School. Beyond this, last year, we provided a health clinic to this school. We built a church, both financially and physically, and we've helped to develop an orphanage program that meets the needs of 30 children immediately by paying for school fees, providing meals, uniforms, and coordinating childcare for those children. In year three of our mission, our plan is to break ground on an orphanage and to introduce the first 12-step countries, or excuse me, the first 12-step programs within the country of Kenya, coordinating with over 60 churches. There's been a lot of expenses involved in these endeavors. The community of Tazel, however, has been very generous in supporting our Kenya mission, and our big fundraiser this year is a concert. I don't think there's anything quite like music. Music reaches across political lines, socio-economical barriers. Music gives a voice to ideas and provides a platform for human emotions to be expressed. Several years ago, we had the pleasure, as a small town, of hosting Karmal Lee at the Old Ramy's Lot for the Back of the Dragon event. This event was huge, and it helped to springboard the Back of the Dragon, which has now become a backbone of the ecotourism initiative in our town. I think one reason this event was so successful was that they brought in a high-level musical act. A concert for Kenya is doing just that. On June 1st, 24, at 8:00 p.m. at the Back of the Dragon Welcome Center, we will be hosting season nine American Idol winner, Lee DeWise, and his guest, Bristol Lightning. Lee is an accomplished, award-winning musician, and he has been working on a new album in Bristol. His work can be heard on shows like The Walking Dead. His song, Blackbird's Song, has over 15 million views on YouTube. Besides Lee, Tazel's walking in Bristol Lightning, who has a star-studded cast themselves, with Grammy Award-winning cellist Dave Egger and renowned jazz guitarist Phil Ficanti. We have a sister church who has helped us with this mission in Bristol, and they desperately wanted to host a concert there, but it was important to me and to our team at Main Street to bring this concert here to our town of Tazel. As far as support from the town of Tazel and my request, we do have sponsorship options if the town is so inclined, and I'd like the town to consider, and in hopes of large crowds, we're expecting between 500 and 1,000 people for this event, we would like the town police department to be aware of these men. The Back of the Dragon has been more than helpful in providing us a venue, and other businesses in the area are engaging in sponsorship programs. It's humbling to think about how many great things can be done from a small town like Tazel, both locally and abroad, but it starts with generosity and a community that's committed. Thank you for listening, and I'll field any questions.
How many folks from Tazel have you taken on these trips to?
Quite a bit, actually. And Dr. Glenn Catherine has been with me to Kenya last year, he was the one that led the health clinic. Brad Byatt, also the town's attorney, and his son Harris went with us last year. I think our team was nine from Tazel last year. So the first year, though, was just my son and I, who was 14 then, he's 16 now.
Glenn and his wife went, didn't they?
Yes, sir.
Glenn and his wife.
Stella and his two daughters, yeah.
Oh.
Yeah, Taylor and Tiffany went.
Can I ask how many tickets you sold so far?
Actually, I don't have an accurate count yet, but I can get that to you, no problem.
So.
I think I should have checked, Joe.
I guess the decision on counts would be if and.
Is Bristol Lightning bluegrass?
No, they're, uh, they are a string-oriented band, so they don't have drums, but they're probably what I would just consider like folk alternative.
Okay.
Dave Egger, the cellist, heads up that band, and he's a Grammy Award-winning artist. He's also.
That's what it says, it says world-renowned and Grammy Award-winning.
Yeah, he's exceptional. He, in fact, if you've heard Vita Levita by Coldplay, the cello work, that was him. Yeah, and he's played with like Justin Bieber, Rihanna, all the, all the big names. He's kind of the go-to guy in the music business for string work.
Oh, it says they're a chamber grass band.
Chamber grass band, I like that. I have no clue what that means.
It sounds cool.
It sounds great, yeah. I'm kind of the chamber grass guy myself.
Chief, with, with the increased presence like this, were you all aware of this? Were you planning on, is it possible to?
What was the day my man I didn't get two perks? So part of the reason for the day, also, chief, is the graduation is on June 1st for Tazel and for Richlands and Grand, and what happens typically, I think our graduation is probably gonna be over with around two or three o'clock in the afternoon, but all the kids that are graduating will go to Project Graduation. That's gonna leave a whole bunch of families, hopefully visitors from those families, in our town looking for something to do. So we thought if we could tether it to some of these other events that are going on in our town, it would, it would help lift all ships.
And there's no street closures for this, it's just.
Correct, yeah, no street closures. Correct, yeah, it'll be in the parking lot. We do have a professional sound crew coming from Bristol also, bringing the big stage lights on that jazz. One consideration we might have from whether they're blocking off their parking lot for the concert itself would be parking. If the town would be able to assist us with any type of information there, it'd be helpful.
Parking is always a maybe.
Parking's an issue with this, yeah.
I would make a motion to become a bronze sponsor.
I'll second it.
Any discussion?
Yeah, I'd second it, just mainly because the outreach of this program, the recognition, I think we're gonna draw some traffic in from this event, I think it is a great event to bring people to Tazel to showcase some, some music that, you know, we can bring in.
And we hope that this is the first concert that we're able to pull off. If this goes well, we're planning on bringing in some other acts. Mayor, would, would you know if there's any Little League going on?
I can find out.
That's, that could pose a problem as far as.
Yeah, yeah, if there's no Little League going on, then there's additional parking at the Little League.
Sure.
I know there's Coach Pitch All-Stars, but that is still in May. It's still in May, so I don't think it goes until the first.
I'll, I'll read that.
It's through that weekend.
Councilman Beasley, Beasley, back to you. Since there's not gonna be any street closure, I think we can take care of that. However, the OTRM is the next weekend, all staff is working, but if I have to work this event myself, it'll be taken care of. That won't be an issue.
Alright, so all in favor of becoming a bronze sponsor?
Last piece of discussion, is there any, like, so the, the parking that's behind travel to Green Space down, you know, just down over the hill?
Yeah.
If there's no issues utilizing that parking lot for parking for this event?
You know where we talked about? Sure, the highway.
So that gets you at least one space, that's kind of.
Who's over the transit, the green, the golden transit bus? The tiny transit?
Is that an Appalachian agency?
It's Appalachian agency.
You have a little green one, what they do for the fair.
Yeah. Talking about the.
Looks like a trolley.
A trolley, yeah, it's still Appalachian agency, yeah.
You good? Everybody good? So all in favor of becoming a bronze sponsor for this musical event, say so by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed, say so by saying nay? Alright, thank you guys.
Thank you all so much, grateful for the opportunity.
Absolutely, thank you, man. Susan, will you give that to Leanne? So next on the agenda is the Friends of Juneteenth support request. Susie Green.
Susie Green, special today, and always standing in every place. My name is Nancy Wilson, and we're Friends of Juneteenth, and we are here to request a donation for our Juneteenth celebration. That we, we do it every year, and we kind of dropped the ball this year because we kind of let our young people kind of do it, and then it didn't happen. So it was like, oh, you did, you know, so that's the reason we're here today. We have talked to Leanne about several things that we normally do anyway, and she said we could get a lot of those things done, like the canyon helping us.
Yeah, absolutely.
Our flyer and everything like that. Normally, we get a donation from the town, so that's why we're here for asking for that donation.
Do you have any on what we did last, previous years?
I checked, and I didn't see a specific amount in there, and I know that we, we turn it in on reports for the police presence and the number of hours that they were authorities, but I didn't see.
Emily kind of knows what you.
Last year it was 3,000, and the county was also 3,000, but I would like to say something on this. Although Tazel Today is assisting with this event, it is not our event directly, the funds do, do flow through the Tazel Today account, so pursuant to the Virginia Code, Section 2.2, 3112, and 2.2, 3115F of the State and Local Government Conflicts of Interest Act, as the executive director of Tazel Today, I have a personal interest in this transaction, so I am going to be disqualifying myself from discussing and voting on this matter.
And then that loses our quorum.
Yeah.
And the impact's still on it, on this today. So we can table it, can we?
Well, the next meeting is early. It's June 4th.
June 4th.
Table it till, uh, next month?
Till June 4th, well, we have enough council members to vote on. We're apparently short on council members, so we can't vote this time, so we'll.
Well, while we have you here, if you don't mind, I can ask some questions. Do you know how many, many people have been coming to that in years past? I know we've had. I didn't know if you had a number, you know?
At one time, we had over 200.
Okay.
It fills up those chairs.
Do you not guys know the numbers? We've had over 200.
Not exactly.
Okay, that's alright, I was just wondering.
It's close to 1,000, the way I see it, yeah. You're the one. So I'm gonna support you on that. It might be next month or October.
So, so, but, but, our councilman meeting for next month is moved up a week earlier, so that allows, allows to vote sooner, so we're not at so close to the event.
Okay, okay, we appreciate it.
Thank you. Ladies Wilson, what date are you, are you gonna do it on June 15?
No, it'll be June 15, that Saturday before.
Okay. Okay, we'll make it work, this, June's very busy. We will make it work, okay, no problem.
And we also wanted to ask if the whole ministry could do, because like it was for the farm, because the fighters kept coming up through the, and.
It was very, it was very disruptive.
Oh, absolutely, transitive there, yeah.
I don't think that it was intentional, but it was very disruptive.
Because they were coming up that side.
It was intentional, because it was the same bikes that were down and coming back up every time.
You couldn't speak because it was so loud. Again, which will be something we'll have to discuss, vote on at the next meeting.
Thank you.
And the meeting is when now?
June 4th.
June the 4th? Is it the same time as the Board of City Base meeting?
So ours will start at 7:30, I, theirs starts earlier, I believe. Are you scheduled to go to that one?
Yeah, on the 4th.
So if you could have just one representative, maybe, come here?
Okay, at 7:30?
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
So next on the agenda, new business recognition, recognition, we have nothing for this month. So next is the approval of council minutes for the meeting on April 9, 2024, and a special call of council meeting on May 7, 2024. I'll take a motion to approve the minutes.
So moved.
Any discussion? All in favor of approving the minutes and the special call of council meeting minutes, say so by saying aye? All opposed, say so by saying nay? Alright, motion carries. Next is the approval of the financial statements and financial report for April 2024. I'll undertake a motion to approve.
So moved.
Say it. Any discussion? All in favor of approval of financial statements and financial report, report for April 2024, say so by saying aye? All opposed, say so by saying nay? Motion carries. Next is the committing conference updates, Planning Commission Committee, councilmember Davis.
The Planning Commission did not meet this month.
So next is the Industrial Economic Development Authority Chairperson, Harris, five minutes up, Jackson.
Hello? We had our regular scheduled meeting on the first Monday of the month. Things we were able to move forward is our ongoing project with the bowling alley. Chris is gonna provide a demolition update at the end of the meeting. We also had our first hall dialogue and design, where two members of the town council, two members of the IIDA, two members of the farmer's market, were able to attend a Zoom call about our next steps and what that project could look like. So we're in good discussion there, and we seem to have really good groups to keep things moving forward. We would like to ask council for support with our ongoing hope to potentially list and advertise the Ramy Lot for sale. As a reminder, the, the reason why we're hoping to pursue selling or offering that space for development is to help the IIDA develop a budget. We think by the IIDA having a budget can help things in Tazel like housing, as well as acquiring properties to help, to help remedy life, and also partner with other organizations in, in our area. So I've had a couple of meetings with Campbell and Plateau Planning District. We're interested in having all of us take a field trip to Marion to see how their housing project has developed and how we can all get on the same page between town, IIDA, and Planning Commission. So again, if you all would please provide us, either if you have ideas for what you would like the site used for, that you'd like for us to retain it, if you could provide that to us via email, or come to our next meeting again in June, we would, like I said, like to move forward with next steps for that, but we've been kind of waiting on support from you all, so, let us know.
I don't think there's any repercussions for advertising. I mean, getting it out there. I mean.
So a couple, a couple months ago when they were discussing that, I went to the IEDA meeting and, IEDA, obviously. But, uh, and my recommendation to them at the time was, hey, let's just make sure we're communicating so that we know where, uh, what you're, what you're, what you're doing. Coming to our meetings and we're talking, we're going to your meetings, uh, just to ensure that the cross-communication is occurring. The, in order to pursue a housing initiative, removing lighted property, stuff like that, does the IEDA have a concept for what level of funding that they would need in order to initiate that process? Or is that what we're going to figure out perhaps when we go to Marion?
I think it's both like twofold. So, um, Mr. Raj, when Leann and I met him last month, he provided their, um, when their council supported the idea, what their number was. Obviously, we were in a little bit different situation than Marion's. I think that we'd be worthless if looking at like a tiered kind of situation and, um, but yeah, I think both, that's fair. I think it would be good for us to go and see some of the potential sites that they acquired and how they, um, handled those. Talk about their kind of tiered approach and how they make decisions regarding properties. I think that it would be especially great for our two planning districts to get together so that we are not reinventing the wheel with this effort. They're already doing something that works, um, and I think that we could, we could do that here.
With, with advertising, your hopes is to, to help with housing and it, I know it was the first meeting it was brought up, it was mentioned to sell it to a land developer to, to build houses on that land.
Or just anyone who would be interested in putting.
Something.
Something.
Right, right.
And so.
And then use the, the money generated to.
Yeah, so you all don't have to give us a budget. We've generated our own budget and then we are moving forward and acquiring properties within the way that the IEDA is allowed to based on our files. Yeah, and we would be, I, I think for us, I think our top goal would be to sell it and make a profit. Obviously, give you all back your investment, as was previously mentioned. Second tier would be if there are people who are experienced developers, who have proven projects that would like to come in and partner. We would listen to those too, but right now I don't think that anyone really knows that we're kind of open for business in that way. And so we would like to start generating interest if we can. I think we could advertise on LoopNet. Um, that would be one kind of basic interview.
We need a vote or something like that. We're just going to encourage from council, which from what I'm hearing, I think everybody's kind of in favor.
I mean, I don't think that we have any current plan with that property whatsoever.
The, the one piece of advice I would have is we've learned with another particular property in town that was given with those streams. If you do participate with developers is to have clear parameters on what expectations are and, and work with us on that when it comes to that point. So that we, we rather than just, just work through those things.
Yeah, we're all on the same team. We are kind of excited with potentially helping things move forward. So thanks for the opportunity to serve. And like I said, you're welcome to come to our meetings first Monday, four thirty. We're early, it's great. Get out for dinner.
I have one other question for you regarding, because we did have a budget on, on the agenda for, for tonight. We're going to be discussing it again. And one item that I think is kind of clearly absent, I know Dr. Catherine, who's, who's under the weather today, has mentioned that economic development is something that she's highly interested in. And one of the things that we're looking at is we're pivoting and focusing more on a tourism type base. Uh, does the IEDA have any interest in, in pursuing at least a, maybe a very good factor marketing approach for our town? And I know Tazle Today has previously produced, uh, videos. Uh, as we are finalizing the budget for the upcoming year, is there any, do you see the IEDA's efforts being focused on anything towards marketing for a town? That may be, may not be captured by other organizations like Tazle?
Yeah, we'll focus on whatever you want to.
Okay.
That's what we're supposed to do, right?
Well, that's, that's a piece of it, but it's something that's been absent from the conversation.
Sure.
So far. And I think that as we're finalizing the budget, it may be something that we take into consideration, uh, in order to give our IEDA some teeth and to actually get some marketing and some forward momentum going that can help.
Yeah, that's the other thing. If we develop something that, if we acquire something that's, you know, maybe not in good condition, but we're able to enter into these partnerships with other entrepreneurs, like that could be something that opens up business in town. And I mean, we did welcome, um, Justin Brown, I just forgot where he came from. But we hope to offer some like small business train center in the fall. People are good, yeah, people, people are finished traveling for the summer, so.
So my here, go forward, start advertising?
Yes.
Yeah, and I would like some buzz, like you said, turning some buzz.
Yeah.
Who knows what could come in there?
If you have any interest in developers, you know, send them our way. We're open for business.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, so next is our unfinished business section. The second reading for Amendment to Zoning Ordinance for Hillsborough Drive and the Tampa High School area to be rezoned from A1 to R1 and R2. So, uh, I'll entertain a motion to waive the second reading. So moved.
It's actually two, we have two separate, if I remember correctly, because we don't have two ordinances, one for each section, one from A1 to R1 and one from A1 to R2, I believe.
Okay. So.
Uh, we have, this is the, this is two, one was final. Yes, because we had some from A1 to R1 and then some from A1 to R2. So this is, this was the second section two.
So will one be Hillsborough Drive, A1 to R1 and Tazle High School area, A1 to R2?
Yes.
I, I can do that. So, uh, first I'll entertain a motion to waive the second reading for the Amendment to Zoning Ordinance for Hillsborough Drive from A1 to R1.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor of waiving second reading, states it by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed, states it by saying nay? So next I'll entertain a motion to waive the reading, the Amendment to Zoning Ordinance for the Tampa High School area to re- rezone from A1 to R2.
I make motion.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor of waiving second reading, states it by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed, states it by saying nay? All right, so.
Now you need a vote to pass, then each one.
You want to read it, but?
I know you've already waived the reading, I'm not doing it.
You loved it last month.
So now, now you just got to vote to plead and pass it, but.
All right, so I'll entertain a motion to approve the Amendment to the Zoning Ordinance for Hillsborough Drive and the Tampa High School area to re- rezone, Hillsborough Drive.
You got to do it one at a time, don't you?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep, one at a time.
Let's go to R1.
I'll take a mo, or I'll entertain a motion to, uh, approve the Amendment to Zoning Ordinance for Hillsborough Drive from A1 to R1.
So moved.
Said.
Any discussion? All favors of changing the, uh, or making the amendment to the zoning ordinance for Hillsborough Drive, states it by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed, states it by saying nay? All right, so amendment passes. And next I'll entertain a motion for, uh, amending the zoning ordinance for the Tampa High School area to re- rezone from A1 to R2.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor of amending the zoning ordinance for the Tampa High School area to be rezoned from A1 to R2, states it by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed, states it by saying nay? Thanks, so, amendment passes. Next, uh, Councilmember Beasley is going to give a discussion on Mills Tax Incentive.
Yes, uh, last month we, we discussed, uh, looking at, uh, creating a Mills Tax Incentive. And we actually tasked the IEDA to, to hit up that. And, uh, Karen, uh, I believe you all spoke about it today, Monday, and there was support, but there was a need for more direction on what the council would like to see out of that. Um, so we've got, we've gotten more information, uh, we've been presented with a packet, uh, recently with a, a type of package that, uh, with full uses. Uh, we're going to provide that to you all to, to look at. We also had another idea, one thing we want to do, and we talked, uh, Councilmember Ronan talked about it earlier, is we've been focused on a tourism-based economy as of late, and we really want to help tourism-based businesses. And so one thing we want to do by looking at a Mills Tax Incentive is looking at a package that will help not just new businesses, but all businesses that are willing to take a risk and to try to grow the town's economy. One idea that I came up with, uh, is something, and this is just basic points for you guys to build off of it, if you would like to use it. But something in which we, uh, ensure the town's total Mills tax revenue is increasing, something in which, uh, a town, any business in town, not just new, old as well, um, if they increase their Mills tax revenue, they would be able to, uh, receive a rebate on their increase of, uh, Mills tax revenue. Uh, and also it could incentivize, uh, timeliness of payments, ensuring that their payments are made on time of their Mills taxes. I mean, everybody's got to pay the, the Mills taxes, this would be a rebate type situation, but it would be, um, advantageous for all businesses to, to try to, um, to try to grow their business, which everyone's trying to do, I understand. But it would give, uh, a little bit more incentive to do that. But, um, so that's the direction we'd like to do. We're going to get you, um, the package from WHIFL. Put that idea that I had in more formal writing and then hopefully you guys can use those as guide rails to, to come up with a plan.
And you foresee it being forever? Is there, is there a number of years limit on the businesses receiving this rebate?
Well, it would be, so the way I, I see it is it, it's an increase from the year before is what would be eligible for, uh, rebate. Uh, in the idea I have in my head, obviously. But if, if you're increasing the revenue, that's tax money that we, as a town, would not have had the year before. So as long as you're growing your business, I, I would see that as being eligible to do that.
Yeah, so not a threshold of numbers of years of participation in the program?
Not, not, no. I, I don't foresee that, because as long as we're growing, that's great for everybody.
Yeah, we were really focused on in our limited discussion that we had was making sure that our very clear reporting guidelines in the sense that there's, everyone's accurately recording their previous year's Mills ta, Mills tax. And as we said, like the EBAG grants have, we would have, they would have to, you know, meet every, creating the taxes on time. Some certain day, like some, you know, processes throughout the year in order to receive that.
And, and I, I fully agree with that. We need to make sure that there's loophole, you know, uh, guidelines, uh, you know, things to deter abuse of the program. Um, but, uh, yeah, that, that's basically, and I think the, the WHIFL program details some of those type things in there. And the EBAG grants do as well.
Yes.
Uh, so we can use those as a basis.
Do you all have a timeline when you want this developed?
Uh, I mean, we would, as soon as we can. We'll be getting the information out to you this week is the plan. So, um, you know, if you could have a, hopefully we can get out to all the members and they can come back with a proposal next month? Or work through it next month, workshop it?
Yeah, we don't want to.
I don't want to over promise a little.
No, I'm not trying to, uh.
Well, and I think that the main idea is that we don't want, we want to help a new business out, but not at the expense of the existing businesses.
Yes. And gives the existing businesses a chance to, you know.
Right.
Get incentivized as well.
Is that it? Any questions here?
Well, taxes on the sales, if you bring the tax down, you might get cheaper food.
Well, the.
It's only unprepared food. So if you go to the grocery store and buy your food, you make it yourself, you're not paying the Mills tax.
I, I'll talk about the restaurant second.
The idea, the, the benefit of using the Mills tax to, to gain tax revenue is to incentivize tourism from out of town limits so that we get other people's money, not have to use our own citizens' money. So when the citizens bring it in, we, we want to reward the, the businesses that are bringing in more money from outside of the town.
Well, more money, period, really.
Well, yes.
I mean, it can be in or out, but we were hoping that there's more cutting.
Right.
Thanks, Joe.
Thanks, Joe.
So, uh, next on the agenda is the first reading for Amendment to Zoning Ordinance for One or Six Grant Roads to be rezoned from B2 to M1, attorney pine?
This will be an amendment to an existing ordinance, Chapter 23, Zoning, Article 1 in general, Section 23 dash 2.1, Town of Tazle zoning map. Beedordade by the Council of Town of Tazle, Virginia, pursuant to Section 6 dash 2 of the Town Charter, and Sections 23 dash 2 and 23 dash 6 of the Code of the Town of Tazle, that hereby amends the Code of the Town of Tazle to incorporate the recognized Town of Tazle zoning map into the Town Code and to further enact the following change to Town of Tazle zoning map in order to reclassify the zoning designation of a certain parcel of real property located within the town as identified below and to reconfigure the Town of Tazle zoning map accordingly. Section 23 dash 2.1, Town of Tazle zoning map, tax map parcel number 094B2A0007C, reclassified from Business General B2 to Industrial General M1. All other designations as indicated on the Town of Tazle zoning map remain unchanged. First reading, May 14th, 2024.
So with the schedule.
I was going to tell me agenda for the second reading, June 4th.
So, uh, can we get a motion to set the second reading for June, June 4th?
So moved.
Second?
Said.
Any discussion? All in favor of studying the second reading for June 4th, 2024, states it by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed, states it by saying nay? Okay, so there'll be a second reading next month? There's, I didn't see anything under miscellaneous, so we'll jump to our new business section. And so resolution of support for DHCD IRF grant application for Tazle Cinemas. So the resolution reads, where's the town of town? Where the Town Council of Town of Tazle and the Town of Tazle IEDA desires to submit an application for the industrial revital, revitalization fund grant administered through the Department of Housing and Community Development. And whereas these funds would be used for public private partnership between the Town of Tazle IEDA and Tazle Cinema and Entertainment LLC for the renovation of a formerly dilapidated movie theater. And whereas upon completion, the building will once again operate as a movie theater with a performing arts stage, which means more jobs, opportunities and a better quality of life for the surrounding area, which will also create a more attractive economic footprint for not only Tazle, but Southwest Virginia as a whole. Now therefore be resolved that the Town Council of the Town of Tazle and the Town of Tazle IEDA hereby supports this application for funding of $399,000 to the Department of Housing and Community Development, with Tazle Cinema and Entertainment LLC providing a match of $638,709.39. Therefore be resolved that the Town of Town Council and the Town of Tazle IEDA hereby grant authority for the interim town manager and lord town manager to execute, execute project administration agreements for the proposed Department of Housing and Community Development funding. So, uh, need a, need a motion to support the resolution?
I still have a little bit more information.
Yeah, I would like to provide some more.
Okay. That's all I thought you were going to say first, I think.
So, the industrial revitalization fund grant, it has also a loan program. And so we actually applied for this with cinema last spring and we were not successful in that application, so that was denied. However, Sharon wants to reapply for the upcoming round that closes May 29th. So this opportunity is really unique and it's going to be beneficial for everyone if it's successful. So this would be a loan. The grant is given to the Town of Tazle from DHCD. And then the Town of Tazle makes a loan with a 2.5% interest rate to the property owner, which is Sharon Cox. With those funds that are repaid back, those are your funds to keep. You do not have to repay those to DHCD. Lots of towns use that money as a revolving loan fund. Lots of towns use that money as a revolving loan fund to do small business loans, you can do many grant programs, there are all kinds of things that you can get creative and do. It is also a forgivable loan, lots of opportunities there. So, if it's successful, it's going to spark economic development in a couple of ways, and it could be ongoing. The revolving loan, loan fund in particular, I think is just a phenomenal idea that could benefit all of our small businesses.
Okay, so, the amount DHCD gives us...
Three hundred and ninety-nine thousand.
And then we loan that amount to the Tassau Cinemas.
Yes.
And then we collect on that, and then, but she still has to come up with that other amount.
Yes.
Through outside funds.
Right, she's already expended three hundred and seventy-two thousand of her own capital, and then the additional that makes up the six thirty-eight are future expenses that are coming in the next couple of months.
Yeah.
And that is not any other grant funding or any other loans, that's her private capital.
Okay.
So...
So we actually make money if this is...
Yes.
Successful.
Yes.
And if it's...
And we lose nothing.
Exactly.
I was going to say, if it's not successful, on the off chance, and nothing comes of this, the money's forgivable, we get, we've got, we have received it, and so, we would give it to her, but if, if she doesn't make payments, then we're not...
We're not out of it.
We're not out anything, other than what she gave us, and the possible, probability of the future funds.
She will have to enter a performance agreement with the HCD. You guys are essentially the pass through.
Gotcha.
And you'll benefit from the interest.
Two point five percent.
Yes, exactly. And then you can use it for whatever you'd like to use it for.
So basically, if it doesn't work out, we lose nothing, and if it works out, we make money.
Yes. You don't have any other competing agreements for this program, this funding round, that I'm aware of, anyway.
So, is there a cap on how many you could apply for the I R F?
There's not a cap, but they're only going to get one. So you're competing against yourself if you put in one.
I think we ran into that. Did I remember correctly?
We received this grant for Sunny Sad Manor a few years ago, but if, that was structured as a grant, was not a loan. So, that grant was given to the town, the town as the property owner paid the developers for that. So this is structured a little bit differently, and there's a lot of information on DHCD's website that you guys can go to, I can email a link out, Susan I'm sure can send that out as well. It has all of the details about the loan structure.
Not that I don't trust you, I'm just, I've never read any of that, it all sounds great, I've never read any of it. I would love to pass this one in an email with time to review the actual, to C Y A, make sure that we're, we're in line with exactly what you stated.
When's your submission?
Thirty days.
Twenty ninth. So, it, if we're going to do something that would need to be...
Oh.
The stress of the town is not, neither a barber nor a hair torn.
Right.
You could probably go to the DHCD website, right now I'm reading two or three pages right back about...
I mean, not, I mean, the only thing I'm knocking on, and I've read the body, which I'm, so, the fact is, it's the eleventh hour, it's, I want to support it, and, and I plan to fully intend to, it's just, I need to read this, that's where, that's where I'm sitting on it currently.
How big of a bite we had in answer to say, what's the Tuesday, so can the...
Thursday? Thursday.
It's no problem, we already had it written.
And just submit it by the twenty-ninth?
Do we have an update on completion?
So, I don't know how many, I'm not going to estimate how many weeks or months, I would love it personally if Sharon would invite you guys to come in and take a tour, because what I have seen, and being in there, and bringing DHCD through, and taking pictures for grant applications, tremendous progress has happened, it's just not commonly known what she's done.
Right.
Have they resolved the issue with the retainment?
Yes.
With the joint property owner?
I think so, yes, with, yes, on what you're referring to.
Yeah, I heard about that.
Yes, she had to dig twenty-five hundred feet of, of French drains.
How about the merchandise, the equipment stuff coming in, are they coming in now?
So, this grant, the loan, would cover expenses like the marquee, and signage, it's going to cover one of the heat pumps, one side, heat pumps for one side, a couple other expenses, chairs, a couple chairs.
Life of my journal, there.
I would encourage you to ask Sharon to take you there, I know that you all can't go in a group, but...
Because right now, she's sending a box and two.
Yep, it's, but it's, it's impressive to me, because when you, remember the smell?
Yes.
It does smell like...
Smells good, yeah.
Yeah.
It was really bad in the third theater.
It was built on all kinds of springs, example springs, since she had to...
Of the gold.
Yeah.
And all that, I mean, I'd like to see it open.
Yeah, I'll work with Sharon, I'm sure she'll take you.
So, I'll work with the council member, find, and find out when you cut your...
Yeah, yeah.
Thursday's on, yeah, just want to understand that.
All right, thank you all.
Thank you.
So, next is a donation and support request form, Susan?
So this was a form that we put together to try and help council with the donation requests that come in. So this gathers some information that typically is needed, such as the number of participants involved, specifically the ones that live within town limits, if they are affected, if it's a school request, nonprofit business. So what we would want to do is, I think this is a form out there, we have copies available here at Town Hall, and get this filled out before it comes to council, so some of those questions are taken here for the next meeting.
So, so like, since we work with Tassau today to do events, would they have to fill something like this to request an event, since we have kind of standard events that we do throw in?
I think this is geared more toward if they need financial support, if they're asking for monetary...
So they're part of the budget line, so I, I don't perceive they'll need them to, to request it.
Well, and this is, I mean, it's not for events, it's just people that are coming and asking for money.
Right, if they have, if they have a specific something that's happening, like a school fundraiser, or, maybe they're having an event, but it's not for the event itself, that they're asking permission, and they might need to buy sponsorship.
Or like the, where the school comes and they ask for money, can they go to state competitions, and that sort of thing.
I think it would speed the process up, if we have as much of that information like that, and that we can include in the council packet, which is...
I want information about inside the town limits of how many kids.
Yeah, let's go on here.
So, would Juneteenth have to do that? Do it?
No. No, you're already in, you're grandfather.
We got you. Tell this, smile and get ready.
This is a proposal that they have in terms of, for doing this for anything in the future, for consistency.
So, next is the annual cafeteria plan resolution of support. This is something we do each year. On this date, the town of Tassau council members did meet to discuss the implementation of town of Tassau flexible benefits plan to be effective July first, twenty twenty-four. Let it be known that the following resolutions were duly adopted by the town of Tassau council members, and that such resolutions have not been modified or rescinded as of the date hereof. Whereas that form of cafeteria plan is authorized under section one twenty-five of the Internal Revenue Code of nineteen eighty-six, presented to this meeting, is hereby adopted and approved that the proper officers of the employer are hereby authorized and directed to execute and deliver the plan, administrator one or more copies of the plan, and whereas that the plan year shall be for a period beginning on July first, twenty twenty-four, and ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five, and whereas that employer shall contribute to the plan amounts sufficient to meet its obligations under the cafeteria plan, in accordance with the terms of the plan document, and shall notify the plan administrator to which period said contributions shall be applied, and whereas that proper officers of the employer shall act as soon as possible to notify employees of the adoption of the cafeteria plan by delivering to each employee a copy of the summary plan description presented to this meeting, which is, which form is hereby approved, and now forth, now therefore be a result of that, I might let loose on behalf of the town council certifies that attached here, here to as exhibits A and B respectively are true copies of the plan document and summary plan description for account of Tassau's flexible benefits plan, approved and adopted in the foregoing resolutions. Be it further resolved that certified that the above resolutions were made with the consent of full town councils, each of whom were intended on this date. So, Susan, do you like us a little bit, this is a standard practice each year?
This is for our flexible benefits plan that we offer employees with the town through Ameriflex, and so there, there were no changes in pricing this year for the town or the employees.
So, I'll entertain a motion to approve the resolution?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Any discussion? On favor of approving the annual cafeteria plan resolution, states of by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, states of by saying nay? All right, so that resolution passes. So, next, Susan's going to give us some information on the resolution of support for B dot smart scale grant application for Bulldog Lane intersection improvement.
So back in November, Robin and I met with B J, and they pitched two projects to the, that are smart scale program, which just evaluates safety, typically they focus on pedestrian traffic, just generic improvements for, for safety overall. And so, this was one of the projects that we've applied for in the past that weren't selected, and we were waiting by this time to, to apply. So this would involve the turning lane in front of Tassau Hospital, from each direction on Intersa Turnpike.
Try, I think we do need, I'll make the motion, but I got a resolution.
Resolution of support. Whereas the Commonwealth of Virginia Smart Scale Program has established a prior to its prioritization program whereby transportation projects are selected for funding based on the cost effectiveness of those projects to meet performance goals, and whereas the Tassau Town Council desires to submit an application for an allocation of funds for Business U S Route nineteen at Bulldog Lane, under the Smart Scale Program, which are due August first, twenty twenty-four, and whereas this project will address the B trans needs category of safety improvement and road safety, and whereas the Tassau Town Council understands this project to include the construction of an eastbound left turn lane on Business U S Route nineteen, and a westbound right turn lane on Business U S Route nineteen, along with the necessary curb and gutter. Due to the installation of turn lanes on Business U S Route nineteen, a portion of the existing sidewalk will be relocated to the north on Bulldog Lane and upgraded to high visibility, and therefore, now therefore be a result that I might let loose on behalf of the Tassau Town Council hereby support this application for the improvements described to complete state and federal funding under the Smart Scale Program. I need, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Any discussion? On favor of support for the B dot smart scale grant application for Bulldog Lane intersection improvement, states of by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, states of by saying nay? So, Susan, next is a resolution of support for B dot smart scale grant application for Bimbold Avenue pedestrian improvements.
So this was the second grant application that they pitched to us at the November meeting, and this would involve some pedestrian safety improvements between the light at Bimbold Avenue and the cave, so they're proposing a sidewalk there. Right now, we have a sidewalk, but it's painted, so this would be the construction of an actual sidewalk that, that we're handling.
That would be great.
And some improvements to the red light for pedestrian safety as well.
Is that, talking about...
From Bincastle Motor Inn to the cave.
So it says Bimbold, but it's really Bincastle.
Well, from the...
It's from Bimbold, so it starts at the intersection at Bimbold.
Oh, on the other side.
But all the improvements are...
Yeah.
I'm going to act as this, somebody will get it.
There's a lot of joggers and walkers in that stretch.
A whole lot.
Okay, so I'm going to read the resolution of support. Whereas the Commonwealth of Virginia Smart Scale Program has established a prioritization program whereby transportation projects are selected for funding based on the cost effectiveness of those projects to meet performance goals, and whereas the Tassau Town Council desires to submit an application for an allocation of funds for Business U S Route nineteen at Bimbold Avenue at Bincastle Turnpike under the Smart Scale Program, which are due August first, twenty twenty-four, and whereas this project will address the B trans needs category of transportation demand management, non-limited access for pedestrian safety improvement, and whereas the Tassau Town Council hereby, or understands this project to include the construction of the sidewalk along the south side of Business U S Route nineteen, from Bimbold Avenue to approximately one three nine seven Bincastle Turnpike, due to the installation of sidewalk, three unsignaled crosswalks will be upgraded to high visibility, pedestrian signal infrastructure and curb ramps will be brought up to the ADA standards where applicable, and now therefore be a result that I might let loose on behalf of the Tassau Town Council hereby support this application for the improvements described to complete state and federal funding under the Smart Scale Program. I'll entertain a motion to approve the resolution of support.
Second.
I was going to get in there somewhere.
You got it.
He's got it.
Any discussion? On favor of the resolution of support, states of by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, states of by saying nay? All right. So, next.
One more.
So, next on the agenda is a resolution of support for B dot commitment and signature authority.
So this one is just a blanket resolution that they ask for periodically, that basically just gives the town permission, your blessing to apply for B dot money.
So, just to clarify the agreement. Okay, so, the resolution affirming commitment to fund the locality share of projects under agreement with the Virginia Department of Transportation and provides signature authority. Whereas the town of Tassau is a recipient of Virginia Department of Transportation funds under various grant programs for transportation related projects, and whereas the Virginia Department of Transportation requires each locality by resolution to provide assurance of its commitment to funding its local share, and therefore, it is hereby resolved by the town council of the town of Tassau that it hereby commits to fund its local share of preliminary engineering, right away, and construction as applicable of the projects under agreement within the Virginia Department of Transportation in accordance with the project financial documents, and be it further resolved that the town manager and or their designees are authorized to execute all agreements and or amendments for any approved projects within the Virginia Department of Transportation, and witness wherever the foregoing was about to by the town council of the town of Tassau, Virginia, on May fourteenth, twenty twenty-four. So, I'll entertain a motion to approve the resolution of support.
Motion.
Second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? On favor of the resolution of support, states of by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, states of by saying nay? Okay, so we're done with that. Next, Susan's going to discuss some budget amendments with us.
So in your packet, you have a list of budget amendments that me and this recommending that are made, and looking through here, I don't see any that specifically pertain to Tassau today in the listings. And I think these are primarily related to her in the year.
Just moving that money.
Yes.
So it looks like some going to the I E D A. So, have you all had the opportunity to look through these? Nothing's coming out glaring. Nothing's coming out glaring.
No, a lot of it's just realized pressing on switches and things and stuff.
The shell game.
I will make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Any discussion? So all in favor of approving the requested budget amendments, based upon CNI?
Aye.
Or opposed based upon CNA? All right, so the budget amendments are approved. So next, Mr. Hurley's gonna give us an update on the bowling alley demolition.
Okay, I was reading through the paperwork here, and our first asbestos report from 2016, so it's been eight years since it works. We did a bid in 2022, 23, five, 23. We had sent out for bids last year. We got five responses, but that was tabled for a while to try to use the building for other uses. But we sent letters to those five bids, kind of the bid on it, and we got actually four back. One got lost by a courier. It actually took it to C-Block, but we got three bids. The first pre-bid was April 24th. We had two people there, which Lust has already bid on to begin with. And the day, we got three bids on the May 8th, we opened, and Empire Salvage won that bid. But if everything goes as planned and the asbestos abating don't cost a fortune, we'll have less than $6,000 in debt by, because DEQ gave us five. And R and L Engineering, the study for the building, that was another $5,000.
Then we got grant work for the asbestos payment as well, right? So you said if it doesn't, is it up to a certain limit?
I think then the Empire Salvage is gonna do all of the abating. They have to. The building has so far gone, it's all fell down in the bar area, fell in the bottom area now. It has to be all taken out to get rid of the asbestos.
Okay.
In that, you know, I think we said it before in previous meetings, but again, when I, before I got on council, I was on the IEDA. That was one of our last muscle movements, was to get the bowling alley demo, get that site prepped. And we knew at that time it was gonna be somewhere around 68, somewhere around there. And now because of the efforts of our current IEDA being proactive in getting grants, we chopped that down to $6,000, right? Like so, and as far as a good job Town of Tazza, like that's a good news story.
Yes.
So it's a good job IDA, and hopefully we got more of that to come. So I'm excited for the future of that, that project.
You got it, pal.
Rock, rock team.
Any more discussion? All right, Susan's gonna give us an update on the night fishing schedule.
So we have a few dates set for summer for some night fishing. So we have Friday, June 28th, Saturday, July 13th, Friday, July 19th, Saturday, August 17th, and Friday, August 30th.
Now, will there be any dates further in the year with that?
There is an issue that we discovered last year with some of the dates that we had picked at that time. There are restrictions on night fishing. I think it's from September 1st through the end of October.
These are state level.
Yeah, that's at the state level. You cannot do night fishing at that point. So we tried to pick times earlier in the year this time. I think last year it was a substantial later in the year. So we didn't have a date available. So we put these out there now to...
Any idea, does anyone know how well it was attended last year?
I have a running friend that uses every date that we allow it to be done, so.
Really?
Yeah.
That's great.
Yes, he really enjoys it, so.
I'd like to make a motion for night fishing.
So you want to make a motion to approve the dates that they've suggested?
Approve the date. Say it to start.
All right. All in favor of approving the suggested dates for night fishing at Lincoln Charlotte, based upon CNA?
I do have a discussion before we vote, sorry. Chief, did we have any, any issues last year? I know Chief feels and expressed some concern, so just wanted to confirm that. Okay.
That's right.
I'll have to go to the other room.
So all in favor of approving the suggested dates for night fishing at Lincoln Charlotte, based upon CNA? Or opposed based upon CNA? All right, we have some happy night fishings. So I didn't see anything under the miscellaneous, so I think my sign then.
Yes, sir. Billy J. U. D.
Hello, could you say your name and address, please?
Billy J. U. D. 961 Maplewood Lane. I just, I appreciate the little speed limit signs I have that you guys put out there. The Sheriff's Department did. But my thing is possibly trying to get some kind of a sign or something. They start from car line in the high school in the mornings and usually evening times, you know, around two. But there's like no kind of children at play sign or anything on that road. There is on car line and, you know, stuff like that, but there is a lot more kids. I moved to 961 Maplewood Lane about two, about two and a half years ago. And since then, there's more kids that come up. My son's non-verbal autistic. And there's been three other kids that have moved in there. So there's a lot more kids than there were before. Plus, we have the new sidewalk that's built in there. You have the track team. You have all kinds of athletes. You know, all family members with their dogs, and they're gonna want to enjoy it. And so many people take that turn and they end up in the ditch where the cemetery is. And it's got the dents to prove it.
It's got the one and direct cannon coming up to make a...
Well, right when you say you're coming off the car line and you're going onto it with road, they kind of meet to go down to the high school. They start where the curb is, right there where my house is, and then they start speeding. And they speed this way, but I noticed they were slowing down until they hit that little thing there, but not coming from.
Yeah, we're taking that one big curb out by the sidewalk where you just stopped where you were coming from on high school. We're taking that curb out, we're straightening that.
That is, that might even give me more deep learning to speed.
Well, it's better for the buses when they come down, they go in and back straight. And I talked to Leanne about getting that fixed to make it go straight that way as both ways. And as we have the radar, we'll radar it.
Yeah, that is a road. I have been guilty of it a few times. It is...
I wish I'd caught you.
But it is, I mean, it is, if it's straight and you don't, you know, once you get to a certain point, you're past houses, it is a very easy road to speed.
Once you get past the department, then you have that little space there.
Yes, it is.
But most of, I'm telling you, by sitting there, most of them start where that curb is from car line. They speed up and then, yeah.
Women.
Yeah, I can see the definite need for that.
So we put in order for crosswalk signs there, and while we're going out, we should look in there. Any original type signs to bring awareness of children playing.
Maybe we could put flashers on the crosswalks.
Is that scary?
It does have flash, okay. Anytime somebody sees flashing lights, I slow down.
Yeah.
I'll talk to Leanne and Director of Public Works when, about then next week, and see what we can do in that area.
And I will add that we have been working with her, and we have rode several tickets down there. The problem that I'm having is in the morning time. I have three intersections of school traffic.
Yeah, sure enough.
Very slim among folks. But what we were doing was holding night shift over for a while, we go down there. And we have rode several tickets, and then replaced the speed sign for... She's been very nice with us. She's not, she's not complaining. She's just needing help. We're trying to provide as much help as we can for her.
Well, that's in the Sheriff's Department. That's where they're looking at.
It's a time limit.
So you're not in Tazza, but you can't actually go right to like...
Yeah, they have been trying a lot more in there, like, and I've seen a form below, so I really appreciate that. I mean, I always thought my...
I'd say it's a double edged sword too, because you got officers watching the intersections and then it's parents and kids late for school that are doing a lot of the speeding.
It's like a control tool.
They're taking advantage of the situation. I mean, they know. So we have been trying to pull our, our whole night shift over to do some things. And then in the evenings, we've been trying to bring people that's off out to work the highway safety. It's not in the timeframe, but we've got approval to have a little bit of maneuver there. So they have, they have been working.
I can tell you the majority of the time, my kids ride with us, so you don't have to worry about them.
Well, we were, I was bragging that they got, they were pulling people over, and then one of the come, well, we call them gang birds or something, but they guys fine. They were speeding out. But the bus driver's been helping too, like during the morning when they do speed, he comes, she pulls up where he can get on, right there where the driveway is or the sidewalk is. But on the way home, she just can't do that route. So we tried to do it the best we could without...
At 25 miles an hour in the downtown area, just a good candy store to pick up speed.
Well, see, we have a fence, but our, the way the property is where I rent it, it's got the same, there's another house. So there's an open part of the fence. And with him being on the wall, we don't know what he's going to do. We always try to keep him to this side, and with it being summertime too, he likes to be outside, so.
We'll definitely work with him while absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you for bringing that track in. Is that it, Chief?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so next is our council member comments section.
I've got one. Last meeting, we had, we know that June's busy, Chief, so we're, June's gonna be crazy.
We're going to be, we're out.
Well, there's one more weekend we can try to fill up for.
The, my goddess is gonna kill me after. Definitely, I was, yes, I have a few extra badges. The place your AI that was discussed with DHCD, we know that June's gonna be busy. We're, we're trying to focus on measuring, you know, good metrics for like how, how these events are impacting our town, our visitors, you know, our national taxes, all that. I would love to see us get in contact with it. I don't know if we delegate that to the county management to get up with DHCD and see if we can get that into play. Because it should be just a subscription that they're given this access here. It shouldn't be, I don't think that there's any physical infrastructure that goes with it. Could be. But if we...
Any part of the website, they can narrow it down pretty...
Yes.
Straightforward to what area you want the pings to come from.
We know that we've got Taste of Main Street coming up on the 18th. Maybe there's room for that this weekend. But, but getting into the event season, it's very appropriate for us to measure that as best we can. So whatever it takes to get that, it's free, it doesn't cost us anything, but to make sure that that follow through occurs is something that I'm interested in. Thank you.
That might also help for some grants as well, for some, there are some tourism grants for existing festivals, so that helps a lot.
Anybody else? All in favor of a motion to adjourn? But you can't say yes.
Yeah, I suppose, okay. On this Lincoln Charlotte part on night fishing, you know, Darrell White is a carp fisherman all the way through. He kept begging me to get night fishing started. He passed away last year, so I hope he can see us now. He's a consultant at the site right there. Darrell's a good man, and I'm through it.
Anybody else? All in favor of a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All right. All in favor of adjourned, based upon CNI?
Aye.
Or opposed based upon CNA?